Mr. White's man, I should say, I prepare the exchange just before the short adjournment, that there is a particular reason why the Court would welcome the opportunity of rising earlier than planned today. So we're delighted to hear that you're a bit ahead of yourself, and further ahead of yourself will not come amiss. And of course, Mr. Melton, we'd be surprised if you needed a full hour for your reply.
I anticipate fifteen or twenty minutes.
Good.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you, my lady. You were still dealing with Laporte.
Yes.
I should say, given Lord Kerr's remarks about Phillips's comments in various claims, I think Lord Sumption in Woodland, who was dealing with the non-delegable duty aspects, found it more helpful, although I'm not sure he fully identified all of the elements in it. But if I could take you to paragraph two, four, five of the judgements of Judges Gummer and Hain, which is memory stick one, five, two, five. They deal again with intravein, and then, five, six lines down, it said, following the citation, "It is a formulation of the duty that may be understood in two radically different ways. Is the focus on the last phrase, reasonable care was taken of her, upon the reasonfulness of the conduct of the person who is caring for the pupil? Or is it upon the condition of the child continuing to be in a state consistent with reasonable care? That is, the duty might be understood as a duty to ensure that those who have the care of the child act without negligence. Alternatively, it might be understood as a duty to ensure that the child is kept reasonably carefully and is therefore not harmed by any act or omission of those who actually have charge of the child. The distinction between the two ways in which the duty is understood is fundamental, but at times in the course of argument, there appeared to be an elation of the two. And of course, it's the latter that the claimant contends, the appellant contends, we'll here, adopting, Mr. Justice Mills, at two, eleven, that the duty is breached by harm, however inflicted."
Well, by whom?
Well...
Anything anybody says by anybody.
I think Gummer and Hain might feel that if you have a child in your care, and even without negligence, that child is injured by, for example, a third party, then there might be liability. So, for example, my lord, if a child is in a foster home, and without negligence, the foster parents, another foster child injures that child, then harm has been inflicted upon them, and it's not a breach of the personal duty of the foster parents, but nonetheless, in the foster placement, harm is inflicted.
Yes, but it...
I didn't understand, Mr. Melton, to say anything of that kind. And if the duty is full, if a non-delegable duty where it exists is formulated as Lord Sumption formulated it, which is a duty to ensure that reasonable care is taken by
he raised with me before the short adjournment? And I'm going to try, if I may, restrict my response, not dealing with corporations
those to whom the function has been delegated, it wouldn't catch the elder brother, would
or other bodies corporate, but dealing with the local authority.
it?
It would if the definition there given by Gummer and Hain... And my submission is this, that a local authority has statutory childcare duties, which we've
I see.
looked at, and it exercises those powers, and in the exercises of those powers, common ...is correct.
Okay.
That's a bit like setting up an Aunt Sally.
Oh, never mind.
law duty of care arises. At paragraphs two, six, two, and two, six, three, they give examples, but I leave Those powers, in certain instances, will require the local authority to do what otherwise might be an unlawful act, and the most obvious example would be a secure accommodation order you to look at those yourself. And then I would ask you to look at two, six, six, and two, six, nine, which deal with for a child who's out of control. They take them before the magistrates, and they are allowed to place them in secure our two points. One, that you are extending the liability, so it is much broader, and two, at two, six, accommodation for a period. That would otherwise be an intentional trespass, that would force imprisonment. nine, the third point, that it is better dealt with by vicarious liability. But the exercise of those powers is clearly a duty of care. There in those powers is any injunction not to cause injury. If you were to say that local authority workers had a general duty not to cause injury, as opposed to a personal duty, the civic duty that I've described, then they would also have a duty, even in the situation where the duty wasn't delegated to a third party, to prevent the deliberate infliction of injury. And so, for example, a social worker looking after a child in a family who potentially is on the at-risk register, but hasn't yet been taken into care, they owe a duty to take reasonable steps. And if the family injured that child, it might be said, even if they had taken reasonable steps in supervising the family, putting the child on the child protection register, that they had breached the wider duty not to allow injury to incur by whoever inflicted it. Alternatively, if the social worker themselves...
But the child isn't in care.
I accept that.
The child is not a looked-after child.
But, but my lady, do you...
How does it help us to answer the difficult questions that we do have by thinking, what about other situations which are not within those that we have to look at?
The answer is this, my lady. The duty that the local authority owes to a child in care, a looked-after child, and is delegated to the foster parents, is the same duty that the social worker owes to children who aren't in care, but it's not delegated. It's still the same duty of care. It's a duty to take care. And if you are going to widen the duty that's delegated, it must apply across...
The statutory context is completely different.
My lady, it's accepted, and there are many cases where this is litigated, that social workers owe a duty to take care to children, for example, when deciding whether or not to remove them from their family.
Yes, we decided that in a case...
Well, it was J D...
Departed from H.
It was X, X, my lady.
And duty goes, doesn't the duty go beyond simply taking care not to harm? It's a, it's a, because it's a parental responsibility, there's a, there's an active duty to protect the child from harm.
I agree, but what I say is, that active duty to protect the child exists both in relation to a child in care, and in a child who is in a child protection situation, there's been a section forty-seven meeting, for example. And because that active duty exists there, if we are to import into it a duty to prevent injury, then the social worker potentially would be in breach of their duty if, without fault, they left the child in the family and the child was injured. Now, if the social worker themselves assaulted the child, that would be, in my submission, an example of breach of the civic duty, and so something for which the local authority is vicariously liable. But to import a general duty on a local authority not to cause injury is unrealistic and doesn't reflect the statutory regime from which the duty of care arises. And I would direct you to X itself, which is in your bundle.
But you mean not through the, through carelessness, negligence, or intentionally to cause injury? That's all we're concerned with?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Not any old injury arising?
But, but, but my lady, if you say the social worker's duty includes an obligation not to cause injury, either that means that they themselves, that it can be breached in one of two ways, by an assault by the social worker, which I say is a breach of the civic duty for which there's vicarious liability, or if they fail to prevent another person inflicting injury, and if it's their duty themselves, which it would be in a situation when a child isn't yet in care, then they might, without fault, be responsible for acts of apparents, even though they hadn't negligently supervised the placement. Finally, if we go to page on this point, six, seven, nine, sorry, one, two, six, seven, my apologies, is the memory stick, is the citation from X about direct and vicarious liability. And when dealing with direct liability at H, going over the page, last sentence of that paragraph, Lord Brown Wilkinson observes that the authority can only act through its servants, which is the point I was making before lunch. And so, an individual assault by a servant is not a breach, in my submission, of any direct duty the local authority owes, but something for which it is vicariously liable. Can I turn now, please, to fair, just, and reasonable? My learned friend, Mr. Ford, has dealt with most of these points, so I hope I can take them shortly. Firstly, there is some evidence that to impose a liability without fault in respect to foster parents will have a negative effect on local authorities. In his judgment, Mr. Justice Mills considered it would be a drain on resources, and either there would be higher premiums, or the local authority would have to meet the claims from its own resources. In both cases, given the huge demands on local authority resources, it would affect the way it met other obligations. The point made by the appellant is there was no evidence before him about the financial implications, and that is right. But in our submission, it's something that he was entitled to take judicial note of, because either it comes from resources, or there will be increased premiums, at least going forward. Secondly, there was evidence, and it's in the statement of Jane Austen, and I'm just going to give you the paragraph, so I'm going to take you to it, twenty-three and twenty-four, at four, four, two, that it would lead to the local authority increasing the levels of supervision, training, et cetera, for foster parents, and that might discourage foster parents from coming forward, particularly those who worked, and would be a further drain on local authority resources. And both Mills at paragraph two, oh, four, and Lady Justice Black at paragraph sixty-two, recognized a risk of defensive social work not fostering children, and so denying them the possibility of a family. If there is a non-delegable duty in respect of foster parents, there must also be a non-delegable duty in respect of parents, relatives, or friends with whom looked-after children are placed. And that was, as my learned friend, Mr. Ford, indicated, disputed previously, but is now accepted. It follows from the statutory provisions, section eighteen, two, and twenty-one, two, of the Child Care Act nineteen eighty, because the mechanism by which they're placed is the same. The effect of that was dealt with by Lady Justice Black and Mr. Justice Mills, but it's perhaps best seen in Lady Justice Black's judgment in your core bundle. At paragraph sixty-three, memory stick ninety-nine, and I submit this is important, "The imposition of liability on the local authority might also give rise to another undesirable consequence for children. Important amongst the ways in which, under the statute at the time, local authorities could discharge its duty to provide accommodation for the child was by allowing the child to live with a parent or relative," C section twenty-one, two, of the Child Care Act. "If the local authority had a non-delegable duty towards a child in their care, under a care order, making them liable for abusive actions on the part of a foster parent, there seems little principle basis for saying that that would not also be liable for such actions on the part of a parent with whom the child has been placed in this way. That sort of strict liability might well, it seems to me, affect the willingness of local authorities to take what would otherwise be seen as a manageable risk of allowing the child to live at home, thus reducing the chance of reuniting the child with his or her own family, where what would in fact benefit the child." That is the point made by Mr. Justice Mills at paragraph two, oh, six. And, my lady, Felicity Schofield's evidence, and as we've seen from the statutory imperative, the whole point of the nineteen eighty-nine Act was to try and keep more children with a natural family, albeit by home on trial. And it's that aim which we submit would be frustrated if we were to end up in a situation where local authorities, without fault, were liable for the actions of parents, friends, or relatives with whom they'd returned the child home on care, home on trial, I should say. Two other points. In the respondent's case, they say that it is wrong to require the claimant to take the route of establishing negligence on behalf of the local authority in the foster placement because of the difficulties in surmounting the Boleum test.
I think you mean the appellant's case.
I do, and I apologize for my missed citation, I miss, with speaking. The reason that the Boleum test is applied to social workers is because the decisions they have to make are not black and white, but are nuanced. And the duty is a duty of care, but the standard is Boleum, because, like other professionals, the answers are not always obvious. But that that is the appropriate standard is not a reason, in our submission, for trying to create another route for liability. And I don't need to take you to it, but memory stick six, eight, six, the final paragraph of the judgment of Lord Hutton in Barrett versus Enfield sets out the standard of care in such cases, and why that standard should be applied. The other issue that the appellant raises in relation to the difficulties in bringing a claim is that, in her case and in others, it is historic, and so the limitation act applies. But in my submission, that is only right and proper. These are now claims under section eleven, and if, as in this case, it was possible and appropriate to have a trial, and there was not undue prejudice to the defendant, it was appropriate to disapply section eleven, which is what Mr. Justice Mills did. But more importantly, your decision will have an ongoing effect, and so it will apply to claims where the limitation period doesn't exist. And so that can't be a reason for making a decision that the duty should be extended. It may be of interest to you that there has been a first instance case in which this issue has been considered under the nineteen eighty-nine Children's Act and the then regulations. And that is the decision, you have it in your bundle, I don't need to take you to it. It's the first instance decision of Sir Robert Nelson, and he deals with the point very shortly, memory stick one, one, zero, six, paragraph two, three, one. And he says he's considered the two sets of legislation and can see no reason in that period under nineteen eighty-nine Children's Act, which was the nineteen nineties, to distinguish it from the reasoning of the Court of Appeal in N A. My lady, I'm very grateful, unless I can address any questions or there are any other matters you wish me to deal with.
I think we've probably already attacked you sufficiently.
Very grateful for that, my lady.
Thank you very much, Mr. White.
First point, my lady, is impact on the, the alleged impact on the social services, and through them, the potential deleterious effect on foster children. Two things. We've heard, I mentioned this, I think it was yesterday, we've heard a great deal said about the benefits of foster caring compared to being brought up in a home. And what the defendants say, what the respondents say is, well, we mustn't endanger that benefit. But as a matter of principle and as a matter of practice, we disagree with that, or rather, we don't accept that proposition. Professor Bell, in his article, which I haven't copied, but I can arrange for it to be sent later on this afternoon, said this, this is in the second page of his article in the Cambridge Law Journal in two thousand and thirteen, commenting on various claimants. He said, "It's not risk creation as such that justifies vicarious liability, since the person need not be known to be likely to cause harm. Rather, as Lord Millet stated in Lister, the potential danger may be something which happens in that kind of enterprise, and which, and this is the important point, is a potential burden to be accepted alongside the benefits," open brackets, "not necessarily financial, close brackets, to the enterprise. The enterprise, on this basis, the second, third, and fourth policy arguments are woven together in a theory of enterprise liability for helpers, whether they are employed or not. And yesterday we saw, and this is what I mainly said, that it may be a money-saving measure to foster out compared to having a home. But also, there is this less, far less fiscal, there's this not necessarily financial benefit, but what is to gain the benefit as a society of children in foster placements, many to fit in from the lack of control, from the non-institutional nature of the care. It's right that society should also accept the burden, which is that, if it is true, and that's the other question, that you're more likely to be abused in a foster home than not. But making that assumption for the time being, the not accepting proposition, then it's fair only that society should say, right, well, we benefit in so many of these cases from the foster placements, that actually, in the, on the occasions where it happens, that the abuse takes place, we should accept that burden, rather than having the burden borne by the child victim. And the second point, on the question of the potential deleterious effect, I mean, it's said often in this type of case, in Woodland, it was said that the imposition of a non-delegable duty would have a chilling effect on teaching swimming, because it was said, well, we would just send children out to have swimming lessons if we think that we, the local authority, might be liable for independent contractors. And I think Mr. Edie Queen's counsel, I suspect he didn't use these words, but sought to make, but it was said that he might have sought to make the flesh of the court creep in Cox by saying, well, we won't make prisoners work at all, or you'll have prisoners making up these stories, left, right, and centre. But then bringing this to, bringing those principles to this case, it would be very disappointing indeed if it was the prospect of a financial penalty as opposed to the prospect of safeguarding a child that promoted a certain course of action. Defensive social work practice, we say, will not be the result, or certainly one shouldn't presume it would be the result, if you were to find it in our favour in this case. So that's the first point. The second point is, my lady's Aunt Sally, we don't say that the obligation is to protect from harm, however caused. It's quite plain that the mechanisms drawn by Lord Sumption in the Court in Woodland carefully delineate the circumstances in which a non-delegable, now, non-delegable duty can be found to exist. Next, Laporte, but only very briefly. It is right that Lord Sumption quoted Laporte with approval, but you remember also that we read out that he also said that he didn't necessarily agree with every dictator in all of the Australian cases. Next, this question of the assault, deliberate harm. At the forefront of the Court's mind will be the different bases for liability under the two doctrines. And we respectfully say that if one keeps the basis for the doctrines at the forefront of one's mind, then one will not go far along. Vicarious liability involves the relationship between the defendant and its employee, for want of a better expression.
Well, the tort visa will do, won't it?
Indeed.
Defendant and the tort visa.
The defendant and the tort visa. Thank you. Whereas, on the other hand, it is entirely the obverse position, in non-delegable duty, it's the relationship based on the assumption of responsibility between the defendant and the victim of the tort. And if, so, and indeed that extends to the question of control. So in one, it's control over the tort visa by the defendant, and in the other, it's control over the victim of the tort. Now, it's said that if the Court were to go down the route of non-delegable duty in assault cases, it would render nugatory all of the hard work, in effect, that's gone into calibrating the doctrine of vicarious liability. But the two have different bases and have different objectives. One is to make the defendant responsible for his enterprise, and the other is to require a defendant who's assumed this responsibility within certain parameters to safeguard the interests of the victim of the tort. And for the reason I mentioned yesterday, this will have, or has the potential to have a significant impact, I mentioned yesterday the case of Annie Woodland. If the swimming teachers had not only been negligent, but, as sometimes happens with swimming teachers, abused her in the changing room, for example, would it be fair to say, well, no, the duty assumed, the non-delegable duty assumed, does not extend to that kind of harm, but rather... Now, it's said that if the court were to go down the route of non-delegable duty in assault cases, it would render nougatry all of the hard work, in effect, that's gone into calibrating the doctrine of vicarious liability. But the two have different bases and have different objectives. One is to make the defendant responsible for his enterprise and the other is to require a defendant who's assumed this responsibility within certain parameters to safeguard the interests of the victim of the tort. And for the reason I mentioned yesterday, this will have, or has the potential to have a significant impact. I mentioned yesterday the case of Annie Woodland. If the swimming teachers had not only been negligent, but as sometimes happens with swimming teachers, abused her changing room, for example, would it be fair to say, well, no, the duty assumed, the non-delegable duty assumed does not extend to that kind of harm, but rather only covers the breach of a duty to take reasonable care. Or to take the example of the poisoning nurse, would that be, is there a reason in principle why the poisoning nurse should be excluded? There's no reason whatsoever why she should, in our submission. If it happens, and we can, I'm not going to take you through the five safeguards again, but if it happens on hospital premises to a child or a patient, and if it's done by somebody to whom the hospital has delegated the function of treating the patient. And so one should not draw, so, I'm not going to go to Woodland's case because I don't need to. But what Lord Sumption said in Woodland, just before the passage I cited yesterday, and it is paragraph twenty-two, is this, he said, the main problem about this area of the law is to prevent the exception from eating up the rule. Non-delegable duties are inconsistent with the fault-based principles on which the law of negligence is based and are therefore exceptional. The difference between an ordinary duty of care and a non-delegable duty must therefore be more than a question of degree. And because it was going to be more than a question of degree, he then went on in paragraph twenty-three to list the five crucial factors, including this, the affirmative or positive duty not to cause harm. And so what happens in these cases is that there is a duty. First, it might be a duty not to assault, it might be a duty to take reasonable care to cause foreseeable harm. And then the question is, well, what converts that duty into a non-delegable duty? And it is if the five criteria set out in Woodland, subject to the just, fair and criteria, just, fair and reasonable criteria, are satisfied. And so there are abundant safeguards to make sure that this exception does not eat up this rule. Just look, the battling employees, for example, which is an example of trying to make, I would say, one's flesh creep. The doctrine of non-delegable duty has several strands. And the strand that we're dealing with is the strand that protects vulnerable people taken into the care of authorities, being abused by the very person to whom the job of their care has been delegated. And the third party has been negligent, not in some collateral respect, but in the performance of the very function assumed by the defendant. But this is a different strand to the employer's liability cases, and there may be situations in which it may be possible for a claimant to invoke the employer's non-delegable duty. Where, for example, the superior is not integrated in the business of the defendant. But as my lady said five, ten minutes ago, we've got enough on our plate, perhaps, dealing with this case rather than to imagine cases that might possibly offend these principles when we say they ought not to.
Well, we do have to consider what the logical consequences of any decision we reach might be. So to that extent, we do have to look at other circumstances, but.
And what I say is that's sufficient. I think my lady actually said it as well. Um, audible voice. I made the point yesterday, but just to clarify something, and I've checked this with my own friends. I understood from what they were saying, that they said that the ten days of the trial was mainly taken up with the professional negligence aspect of things. Just for the court's information, the case was opened by the defendants on the basis, well, someone here is lying. And of course, as you can imagine, the claimant was subjected to prolonged cross-examination on the basis that she was not telling the truth. And several witnesses were called on her behalf to corroborate her account that she had been abused. And the foster carers and two of their children were called to rebut that. That's a matter of record, I just wanted to set that straight. On the question of integration, it's Lord Reed in Cox, paragraph twenty-nine. I'm not going to ask you to read the passage, but it's an important passage because it does emphasise the interrelationship between the risks and the integration in the enterprise. And just to quote briefly, but I know the court will have the time to go to this later, by focusing on the business activities carried on by the defendant and their attendant risks, it directs attention to the issues which are likely to be relevant in the context of modern workplaces. In other words, when you're considering whether, in fact, foster parents are integrated into the regime, you also need to consider what are the risks that are created by farming out the work. Next, on behalf of, what's said is that actually the foster parents weren't acting on behalf of the authority at all. And in, to use Lord Kerr's words, in compartmentalising responsibility, the other side say, well, the authority could never create family life, or something, and that's what they've done. But that really is to create, to narrow the definition of what the obligation was. The obligation is to, amongst other things, the authority, including accommodating and maintaining the child. And if the foster parents weren't accommodating and maintaining this child and maintaining, including bringing up, on behalf of the authority, then that would be a sort of state of affairs. I know that's just an assertion, it does seem to us clear as a matter of plain English, that they were doing it on behalf of the authority.
You may not have put it in quite that way, because, you know, on behalf of suggests an agency test. I mean, that's one way it's been looked at in the past, vicarious liability, but the other way is to speak of it being for the benefit of, and with the idea that those who reap the benefit should also bear the costs.
Indeed. It came up when Malera Friend was talking about the absence of being on behalf of, and that's why I'm using it that way. Heavy-handed. Lord Hughes put those described in that way, well, with the excessive minis. I think I've already dealt with the point, and so I won't make it again. I have already dealt with the point, I'm sorry. And then lastly, the question whether family placement might give rise to liability, describing the problem broadly. What we say on behalf of the claimant is that it may be that there is a difference between the liability imposed by the territory liability route and that imposed by the non-delegable duty route. Again, what has at the forefront of one's mind, the relationship question, then because someone trying to argue that the local authority is liable for the parents in that situation, when asked, well, what's the relationship between the natural parent, the birth parent, and the local authority? They might struggle to say, well, they are integrated into the function of the local authority. But it would depend on the circumstances which may be influenced by the extent to which they've been, they are themselves being monitored. It only being, exactly depending on the ten minutes, the situation might change. But without conceding the position, I concede that it wouldn't necessarily be obvious that the birth parent might be described as being part of the business activity of the council. So far as the non-delegable duty is concerned, it does seem to us that in those circumstances it will be more arguable, more strongly arguable, that there would be liability. But what one has is the safeguards listed by Lord Sumption, which, if satisfied, are always going to be subject to the fair, just and reasonable test in that case. Now, I don't want to answer today the question whether in every circumstance it would be fair, just and reasonable. Or rather, our position is that it does seem to us that in most circumstances, but I can't envisage them all, there would be a breach of a non-delegable duty if a parent or aunt or whoever it may be did abuse the child whilst the child was subject to a care order. Now, and the reason why that is, is because of the benefit that inures to society of placing children in this situation back with their parents potentially, and we say that there there would be many, many circumstances, we say, in which the court may decide that it would be fair, just and reasonable. But it is quite, it is a, it's not straightforward, we say. Unless there's anything else.
It would appear not, Mr Milton. Thank you very much indeed. We're grateful to everyone for their very careful submissions, both orally and in writing in this case. It is a welcome change for this court to be confronting again fundamental questions of the common law of tort. Four legal subjects with which we all grew up. We don't often get our chances. We understand that these are very important and difficult questions, and of course they arise in a particularly sensitive context. So we're grateful to you all. We shall, of course, take time to consider our answers to them and let you know in the usual way. Court is now adjourned.